I'm sure we're gonna have some discussion over this. Missing two councilmen tonight? It's time to get going. I'd like to call the January 7th, 2019 County Council to order and first on the agenda, we'll have an invocation by Mike Eilam and if you would, lead us in the Plunge of Allegiance. Do all please rise.
Let's pray. Father, we pause before you tonight and just thanking you for the blessings that you've given us in our country. We thank you for the opportunity to gather tonight and to make decisions and we ask now for your wisdom upon this meeting. We thank you for the blessings that you continue to give us and we just lift up this entire meeting and ask that your grace would be upon us. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Eilam.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander. Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
Okay, our first order of business tonight is to elect a chairman. Do I have a nomination for chairman?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate John White as the chair.
I'll second that.
I got a...
Any other nominations?
Hearing none. All those in favor of John?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Next is...
You get to change places.
I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to you, John. And then...
Thanks for all your efforts this past year, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Yes, Dave. Good job.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for your confidence, but I want to tell you I wasn't quite sure about doing this tonight, so I put on my best suit, my best tie. In case I did fail, at least I'd be dressed for it. Okay. Next thing on our agenda is election of vice chair. Do I hear any nominations?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Joe Brazel as the vice chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And that's only because he wore a tie tonight.
Are there any other nominations?
Terry Hollander. I'd like to nominate Terry Hollander.
I'll second that.
All right. Okay, we have a second. We have two people running. For the first person running, Joe Brazel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
How was that? How was the count?
It was Joe Brazel and Mike Klinghammer and John and Dave Hammond.
And I didn't vote.
Okay.
And I say aye.
Okay.
Okay. And the other, Terry Hollander?
Aye.
Aye.
Two votes?
Right.
And Joe Brazel has it.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
All right. Moving on, the next thing on agenda is the conditional use permits, Bill Number 4675.
Bill Number 4675, an ordinance granting conditional use permits, CUP 18-15 for a restaurant to Sunflower Hill LLC property owners and Michael Coneman applicant.
Okay. What's the next process?
Exhibit C has been delivered to you in plenty of time and it was out, put out on the packet for the public, and so it is now ready for a vote.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments on the CUP, gentlemen? Then I ask for a roll call.
An ordinance granting conditional use permits, CUP 18-15 for a restaurant to Sunflower Hill LLC property owners and Michael Coneman applicant. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Eilam?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Bill Number 4675 has passed and we're moving on to Bill 4676. What's the position on that?
Am I allowed to make any comments on the CUP on 4675 now it's passed? Or is that, should I wait or what?
I don't see why not. We haven't passed it yet. Would you want to wait till after we pass it?
It was just passed.
No, we just passed it. Yeah. The only concern I have about these CUPs is, as you guys remembered, Mr. Cronin wanted these to, in his district for the pumpkin farm, and I was opposed to this sort of CUP. However, this sunflower farm, they've done a really nice job with it and they did really nice landscape and then they built their building. It was supposed to be a weekend wedding venue. And so, I was opposed to these sort of things because we did the AT district, it's had to be 40 acres or more and it had restrictions. And so, you, the council voted in favor of this sort of CUP to have a wedding venues on smaller portions of ground. And what my concern was is, well, what's gonna happen is they're gonna have, they're gonna do the wedding, weekend wedding thing, and the next thing you know, they're gonna start selling wine and beer and be open to the general public on the weekends. And then they just become a full operation like a winery that would require more land and more restrictions. And so, in this particular case, these people are very nice, they live on site, they did a great job, but this is exactly what I said would start happening. They're doing, running a restaurant now, which I don't fault them on it because they have a great operation, but is this what our intentions were for, to have these sort of operations spread out all over the county on less ground, on less restrictions? And that was my point when I voted. I voted no for these things. So, I just wanted to make a point because there's more of these things coming down the pike and we made this concession from Mr. Cronin on the pumpkin farm and I was opposed to this. So, I'm just making a point.
I'd like to follow through with that. The pumpkin farm was a pumpkin farm for little kids and they wanted to hold some weddings and receptions on weekends. This is a restaurant. This is like comparing apples to oranges, Mr. Brazel. It's a totally different thing. Conditional use permits are a good functional tool. Every city government uses them in this county because when you have a use that's outside the norm, you can put conditions on it so it doesn't harm the neighbors. And that's exactly what these, this applicant did. They did a good job of it.
Already voted this issue.
We already voted. Okay. Let's move on to 4676.
Bill Number 4676, an ordinance granting conditional use permits, CUP 18-16 for storage of recreational vehicles and boats to Greystone Holdings LLC property owners and Maple Leaf Holdings LLC applicant contract purchaser.
Any questions or comments, gentlemen? Seeing none, read the roll.
Just that Exhibit C was also received on this one as well.
Pardon me?
Exhibit C was received on this CUP as well.
Okay. Very good.
An ordinance granting conditional use permits, CUP 18-16 for storage of recreational vehicles and boats to Greystone Holdings LLC property owners and Maple Leaf Holdings LLC applicant contract purchaser. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Eilam?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public hearing for traffic regulations. And before we have that, I'd like to ask for Mr. Takowski to come up and speak on traffic regulations.
Tonight is the first of two public hearings that we hold in order to provide citizens an opportunity to come in and comment on pending traffic regulation changes that have been requested. There is one note I guess I should make. There was a typographical error in the publication of these ordinances. On the Forestale Road request, I had inadvertently typed Forestale City Limits instead of Numeli City Limits. So, we have to pull that one, republish that one, and we'll come back next meeting. That one will be ready for discussion then at that point.
All right.
But I mean, if people want to talk about it, they're still entitled to raise their opinion, right?
I would think so, yes.
Yeah. Because they come from Numeli.
Yeah. I don't think there's anything wrong with that, but in order for us to properly do the procedure, we need to republish it and then, and then proceed forward from there.
So, if those people that did want to talk on this regulation for Forestale Road, you can't speak on it tonight? Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
I was gonna, I was gonna make a point of this speed limit. We had a lot of emails on the speed limit increase on multiple roads out by the Numeli region. And what that, that's, what, I don't have a dog in this fight. I had a lot of requests because a lot of folks were thinking the speed limit was too low. And this has been going on for years. And so, I had requested to John Grefus and Craig Tolkowski with the Highway Department to see if they had a valid point, if the speed limit was too low, and for them to do an analysis. So, do you want to explain how, how that came about?
Yeah. The accepted standard for setting speed limits, other than legislatively, is to perform what's called a speed study. You put devices out on the road and you measure the speed that the vehicle's traveling on the road, or the speed that the vehicles are traveling. And what you look at is, is the 85th percentile, which means at what speed are 85% of the vehicles traveling? Because that's recognized as what is likely the safe speed for vehicles out there. There's always going to be those that, you know, abuse it and drive faster than that and that's, that's what would be the 15%. But the 85 percentile is the number that is considered to be safe for that road. In this case, we looked at the 85th percentile. It's actually a little bit higher than 45 on most of these roads, but because this is such a drastic increase, we reduced, the industry allows you to reduce that down a little bit just to make sure that, you know, that it's still safe. And we've done that with the 45. Now, there are curves out there, there are sections of the road that the 45 is not suitable and there's methods for warning signs to be placed on those roads with reduced speed placards that advise the public that, you know, that they do need to take it at a lower speed. So, we will be analyzing all those locations and putting up the reduced speed placards where appropriate.
And some of the road, there were, there was a list of roads and some of the roads you did not decide to raise the speed limit on. Those were removed from the list, correct?
No. The four that we received, we analyzed. These were all, these were the four roads that we were requested to do that far, so...
I lost John took some out because, but, but that's okay. I just wanted to, I wasn't sure how you guys came up with that.
Yeah. Predominantly, our rural county roads are set at 35 miles an hour and it's been that way since I came here 24 years ago. I'm not sure how that practice got started, but in this case, we did do the study and we did find that, that the 45 mile an hour would be a safe speed for those roads.
And then, so in your opinion, is it more, is it, what, like, safety is the top, is the biggest issue, right?
Absolutely.
So, you got farm equipment, you got some ATVs, stuff like that on the roads. In your opinion, is it more safe if you post it at 35, but yet 85% of people go over 45 miles an hour? Or is it safer to post it at 45 where that's the expectation of everybody else?
I have never really thought about that aspect of it. I do know that posting it at 35 and everybody driving 45 just turns everybody into a bunch of lawbreakers and I don't think that's really what, you know, the intent there is. We, we would like for these roads to be posted at a safe speed. It makes everybody, you know, comfortable. That's the speed that people are comfortable driving the road and in doing so, they shouldn't be ticketed for, for violating something that, you know, that's, it's safe to do.
Okay. Thank you, Craig.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. What regulation do we want to start with for a public hearing?
Generally, we open it up.
Okay. If anybody has any questions about any of the traffic regs, you're welcome to come up and speak to it.
I'll call, I have cards, so I'll call.
Okay.
Terry Lovekey?
Here.
You can come up and speak.
Just on stop sign requests, is that...
That's it, Terry. Correct.
Okay. Well, first of all, I tried to make a little sketch and I didn't get my college degree in scholarship and hard, as you can see, but, okay. I need to lane a little bit. I know John's from Marywood, he's my councilman.
Jennifer, give him the microphone, please.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
This is Towers Road. This is John Meyer Drive. I live right here, first new house as you go down John Meyer Drive. This is Morec Court Lane, okay? It's the street that comes through. There's a stop sign right here and John Meyer goes all the way up to Jewel Court. At the end of Jewel Court, they're building 28 new homes. I figure it's gonna add 60 more cars on John Meyer Drive. Right now, there's nothing going this way. There's 35 mile an hour stop sign right here as you enter John Meyer Drive. And some of my neighbors that live here can tell you, this has become a racetrack. And when we get 60 more cars on here, it's concerning me because we have common ground here. I don't, it's sort of shaped like this, gentlemen. I'm saying it's around 1.5, 1.5 this, it's common ground. Kids play here. There's a cut through here from Jacob Station, that's the next subdivision past John Meyer. And there's a cut through here, common ground stripped through here. Kids cut through here all the time, they come out on John Meyer on their bikes and same way here with sleds, snowboards, riding equipment, you know, through there. This goes, there's a subdivision, they can go right into their subdivision here. With the traffic on here, it concerns me that some kid's gonna get hit. Plus, at right here at this court, we have three school bus stops of a morning, three more school bus stops in the afternoon. And there's one gentleman here, he can tell you, his wife lives right, they live right here. His wife's even been passed by other people that live on Jewel Court from an other subdivision of a morning. I've reported this couple, three times to county police and I've talked to an officer that sometimes will set at Towers Road and radar on John Meyer there. And I realize they don't have manpower to radar my street, but they've made note of it and I'm just concerned about it, especially there's, there's one person who lives up off of Jewel Court that anybody here that lives there can tell you, it's probably coming 70 miles an hour up that street of a morning when she goes to work. Right, guys? Raise your hand if you agree. So, I'm concerned. I'd like to see a stop sign right here at this corner and a stop sign right here. Now, we got all this construction traffic coming through there, these big trucks, which are gonna probably tear up your road. I don't know if you guys have to repair roads or not, but, but they bought this John Meyer Farm up here and it's a, they're putting in 28 homes and they're, and they're digging now. So, that's my concern. I'm just afraid some kid's gonna get killed coming through here, the way people are driving on this street.
Okay. All right.
So, that's my concern.
Thank you very much. Anybody else to speak, Claire?
Felicia Davis?
Hello. Hi. I'm Felicia Davis. I live on the bend at 4636 Shoshone Trail. I'm here to discuss the need for a form of speed management or enforcement on our busy street due to speeding cars driving on the wrong side of the street and constant property damage. I have personally seen, on many occasions, cars speeding through the bus stop signs while my child gets off the bus. I have children that can't go out the front because of the danger imposed by speeding out of control traffic. I feel most of the speeding cars live at the back of our subdivision and the two neighborhoods that attach to our subdivision, which are Stonecroft and Nottingham. We desperately need some form of stop signs, speed dips or speed bumps to help with this problem before someone gets seriously hurt. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next speaker?
Shannon Panakis? Hi. My name is Shannon Panakis and I have lived at 4640 Shoshone Trail for 14 years. In these 14 years, we have experienced 10 separate incidents of car accidents resulting in damage to our personal property, including grass, mailboxes, and many, many vehicles. I am here today to not only ask you, but beg you, and help get something done to resolve what has been an ongoing terrifying problem on our street. I look forward to a resolution, whether it be stop signs, speed dips, speed bumps, added patrol, lowering the limit, anything and everything, again, to resolve this issue before someone, rather than just something, gets hurt. We as well have young children whom we cannot even allow to go grab the mail, as it is just extremely and severely too dangerous. Thanks to the vehicles that speed down our street daily with absolutely no regard for human life or personal property. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also would like to leave with you or show just some of the most recent incidents involving my, to be tomorrow, 17-year-old son's vehicle, just on the 22nd of December, was totaled in what is another hit and run. And a mailbox that cost $350, handcrafted to look like a birdhouse by a gentleman in his 80s in St. Genevieve, Missouri, that you can't get a receipt for, you know, and just go buy at Home Depot. And this is, like I said, these are just two incidents of 10 in 14 years.
You can leave it with Donna and Claire. Next speaker, please.
Steve Bunt?
My name's Steve Burt. I live at 1334 Highway Double D in Defiance. I grew up in the Numeli area, my whole life, been here for 42 years. I've drove, driven on the roads that, that the gentleman talked about earlier, raising the speed limits on. The traffic on those roads are, like he said, I would say, average 50 mile an hour, something like that. Mostly flat farm fields, not a lot of curves. And in my opinion, that, like he said earlier, the 35 mile an hour speed limit is probably not the way to go as far as everybody being a lawbreaker, everybody, you know, breaking the law every single day, going to work. I have many uncles, cousins, moms and dads that live on that, on those exact roads. So, I'm in favor of this speed limit increase only to make people obey the law, not break the law, every single day. And it's, if you're driving on that road, it's, it's a tough road to do 35 mile an hour on because of the distance and the, I mean, you're out in flat field country. And I do realize there are some farm trucks and tractors and things like that, but in my opinion, it's visually, you could see them, you have plenty, ample time to slow down, things like that. So, I'm just here to voice my opinion and in favor of what you guys are proposing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sabrina Wren?
Good evening, Mr. Councilman. My name is Sabrina Wren and I'm one of the few residents of one of those streets that's a part of this proposal to increase the traffic, speed limit from 35 to 45. I'm here because myself and 21 of the residents who reside on Morrison Lane are vehemently opposed to this idea. And I have to tell you that I'm a little struck by the fact that the survey reflected that 85% of people driving on that road were breaking the law. And so, that's how we're going to adjust the traffic speed limit. When I received the notice on Friday of the increase in the speed limit, the proposed increase, I was gobsmacked. And by that, I mean, I read it as a speeder amnesty proposal. People run up and down Morrison Lane at those kinds of speeds. Why would you reward that? For the people on Morrison Lane, you should know, it's a 2.94 mile stretch of ground and it is hilly. And there are no shoulders, it's a two-lane road, and there are at least 13 driveways on that 2.94 stretch of high, of lane, it's a lane, where people come out with their tractors, with their horse trailers, with their UTVs. It is not a road that is conducive to folks driving 45 miles an hour. We also, the residents, have noted that they have each experienced, this is 21 people, they have each experienced numerous occasions of trying to leave their driveway with a horse trailer or a trailer with farm equipment or a tractor and have been nearly collided with because many of these driveways have hills on either side and you cannot see the traffic coming. The idea that you would increase the speed limit of a two-lane road with no shoulders to 45 miles an hour is unthinkable if you go to Lindbergh in town, Lindbergh, and the speeds are 40 miles per hour and there are not a whole lot of driveways, there are certainly no farm equipment, there are no horse trailers, there are no people trying to haul farm machinery from one farm to the next. As I said, I have a petition. I interviewed 21 people on our street. I think I missed two. And to a person, they said, "We can't have this higher speed limit." Some of the older folks who've been there for a long time, who have a lot of common sense and wisdom, said, "You know, why don't you just leave a little bit earlier?" When you drive that 2.94 stretch of road, if you're going 35 miles an hour, it takes you five minutes. If you're going 45 miles an hour, it takes you 3.9. So, you can't spare a minute or more to keep things safe on our, on our lane? That seems absolutely unbelievable. And it, and ridiculous that we would rely on a study that shows that 85% of the cars that are transporting along that lane are speeding. When those studies are performed, an engineer who's worth his salt will tell you that it's not just the 85% number, it's the 85% number plus all the factors in the use of the road, including what other uses are going on. As I said, we have farm equipment, we have wildlife, we have cyclists, we have pedestrians who routinely walk that lane or run that lane every day. So, you can't just measure the cars that are driving across that small little road. You have to also include all the uses and the people whose opinions matter and those are the people who live on that road, the residents. So, I would urge you not to uphold this request for a speeder amnesty request on Morrison Lane.
Don Meyer?
Hi. My name is Don Meyer. I live at 1,001 Sigamore Creek, drive right across from Forestale Road. I've got family members that live off of Miners Hagan and then some other relatives and friends that live down Forestale Road. And I've chatted with them. The fact of the matter is that change is constant and change is coming to that part of the county. Highway T and Highway Z continue to get additional traffic every day. There's additional developments scheduled or expected in, in some of the areas we're talking about. We've had some recent developments out there where the roads inside developments are being built or required to be built by the county to 35 mile an hour. And at this point, we're looking at changing a 35 mile an hour to a 45 mile an hour speed limit. As Mr. Councilman Brazel mentioned earlier, the county's reviewed these roads, they're up to the safety requirements for those roads at this point. And while I know we don't like change and we want safety key one, I think going to 45 mile an hour is appropriate and I am in support of that. And I think their comment was made earlier that the average roads' speed actually is higher than that and they've went below that and I think that's a prudent thing. I think 45 is a reasonable migration from that. Probably the recommendation would be based upon the comments I'm hearing at this point and we all have limited manpowers, is a 45 mile an hour speed limit and patrolling more of that speed limit would maybe be more effective than just leaving a 35 mile an hour speed limit with people still averaging well above 50 miles an hour. And I know we got limited resources to spread around, but I think that would be a happy balance between the two is just to increase, to look at the increase in the speed limit, but also look at increasing patrolling in that area at the now higher speed limit. And maybe it's a saturation on the front end once the speed limit's adjusted to get everybody going down to the 45. The deer accidents may be being caused by someone coming over the hill at 60. I don't know what the speed limit that's going. And I'm also from a farm background. My parents farm and have been farming a long time and I understand and respect the risk there, but the reality is, those are feeder roads to some of our state highways and our growth in that area and we need to adapt and adjust those speed limits for the current uses in that area. Thank you. Thank you.
Phil Fink.
Hi, my name is Phil Fink. My wife and I live at two-two-four-one St. Andrews Drive in the Villa section of the St. Andrews subdivision. We have witnessed on this intersection, the question here of the prohibited parking on the east side of St. Andrews Drive at West Clay. There's cars, there's an apartment complex there, St. Andrews Apartments, and there's cars that park right along the side of the street, and it's a single lane turning in off of West Clay. The speed limit on West Clay is forty-five miles an hour. When you turn in, there's two lanes exiting that street onto West Clay, one for a right turn, one for a left turn. There's no straight ahead. Onc coming traffic coming off of West Clay into St. Andrews Drive, when there's cars parked along the street there on the incoming side, have to drive into the oncoming traffic lane to get around those cars, unless they come to a stop. Which school buses have had to come to a stop before they can leave West Clay. So this is really a safety issue. Other cars have had to stop there, too, because there's oncoming traffic to get around these cars. Sometimes there's three cars there, sometimes there's four cars there, it just varies. There's plenty of parking in the parking lots of, of this apartment complex, many people just choose to park on the street. My wife and I went through our neighborhood, and even some of the people in, not the apartments, but the houses around there, and we got over twenty-five signatures of people that are in favor of this, and they're all aware of it, they all, they've all seen it. So that's why we're proposing the no parking on that side of the street.
Very good, thank you. Next speaker.
Yes, sir, I'm Joe Rosicky, and I live on fifteen Deer Creek Racetrack, I'm sorry, Deer Creek Drive. And I live on the top of the hill on Deer Creek, and they just put that street through that goes up to the, up by Elaine Drive and St. Dominick's High School. But since they put that in, there's a stop sign, I guess that's Fawn Creek that comes, that ends at Deer Creek right there, and there's a stop sign right there at Fawn Creek before you go left or right. But there's no stop sign going up, you know, up the hill or down the hill. And I mean, these cars just fly through there. I mean, it's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, but I'd say some of them are going fifty miles an hour. And it's just, ever since they put that street through, it's just been crazy with the people driving through there. Now, down the hill from us, there's a subdivision that they just put in, and they got three dips down there, which really helps in that area. And then when you go up to Elaine Drive, there's a subdivision up there before you get to St. Dominick's, and they got three dips right in that, too. So it really helps out. But right where we are on Deer Creek, I mean, it's just, it's a mess. And now I've got some grandchildren, and I'm kind of concerned about them playing in the yard. So I would really appreciate it if there was a possibility of putting up a stop sign, going up the street one way and up the other way. And there's, usually a policeman will come around there just to check, and I'd say, when, within five minutes, he's there, that he's giving somebody a ticket, that's how many people just come up and down Deer Creek. It's just really bad. So if you can put up a stop sign, that'd be great, alrighty? Thank you for your time.
Can I ask you a question? Where did you want the stop sign on Deer Creek, again?
Fifteen Deer Creek. I live right on top of the hill.
So you live right there on the corner of Fawn Creek and Deer Creek?
Yeah, Fawn Creek and Deer Creek.
So you want the stop sign to be on Deer Creek at Fawn Creek?
There's one on Fawn Creek, but we're looking for one on Deer Creek. Deer Creek goes up, and then I'm at the top of the hill, and then it goes down, it goes out to Highway P.
Just wanted to make sure I understood what you were talking about.
Going both ways, it's, it's very bad. It doesn't make any difference. I think Joe knows that.
Yeah.
Good luck on the raceway there.
Yeah, it's a racetrack.
While we're on the subject, Dale Becker called me, he's the president of the Homeowners' Association for the subdivision. He couldn't make it. But he's very supportive and very appreciative, and with the stop sign, we, I've been at your, this intersection, that's where we're putting it at, on Deer Creek either side, okay?
Right.
Just how, the residents out there contacted the police, I came out, looked at it, we set up a radar trailer and figured out that everybody was speeding through there. And then the cops did a enforcement patrol, and there was page after page of tickets written.
I know.
And this isn't the hundred percent answer, but at least it maybe helps, so we'll give it a try.
Yeah. Yeah, right now, it's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, and I'd say they usually go about forty to forty-five miles is a normal, maybe even faster than that. So, yeah, you were out there, and you saw how they come flying up there. So whatever you can do, we'd appreciate it, okay? And if you want an extra five dollars, I'll give it to you. Thanks a lot for your time.
Arne Dino.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dino, public advocate and resident. Just a couple, three points that I want to make that applies to each and every application, and then I want to talk about, number one, the Deer Creek subdivision between unincorporated county and the city of O'Fallon. First of all, there needs to be more transparent way, and let's better utilize our website disclosure process. In my looking for information in the applications and the supporting documents from the county engineer and the highway department studies, I don't see any disclosure in the county council packet. So how can you make an intelligent decision, is what I'd like to say first of all. Where can you see, view, disclosure of a study? The county engineer talked about the traffic study, as the county engineer explained, and I'd like to read the survey. So why not be transparent and put it out there for all of our four-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand residents to read, digest, and know exactly what's taking place here? Number two, where are the substantial reasons, justification, facts to support a change? We heard the county engineer talk about a couple reasons on the speed, but I'd like to see concrete facts to demonstrate changing the, either the stop sign, the speed limit, or a no parking area. Number three, the notification process to the public and the affected neighborhoods. How is this process done? Are we advertising it correctly? I know in some areas, we put some type of bill, some type of small billboard or handout, but are all the citizens properly notified, and so they could take care, take part of the public testimony process? Now zoning into number one, the establishment of a three-way stop at Deer Creek Drive and Fawn Creek Lane, this is between Missouri Highway P and Elaine Drive. Half of it is unincorporated St. Charles County, and it goes into the city of O'Fallon where the Deer Creek subdivision lies. I don't believe that the three-way stop is the answer. This is a raceway, as the speaker had talked about before me. The unincorporated spot that's up against the city of O'Fallon, I was going to ask the county police who are present tonight for traffic safety enforcement, but it sounds from the county councilman that there's already been a lot of enforcement. But however, I don't feel the three-way stop is going to work. I'd rather see the street calming method to slow down and corral these cars, because if they don't slow down, they're going to either hit a curb, or they're going to have a flat tire, because they're going to bottom out. So it works in the city of O'Fallon, I think we need to look at street calming in our urban neighborhoods and unincorporated county, and I don't think that the three-way stop sign is the answer. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers for traffic regs?
Yes. My name is Sean Holmes, I live at five-seven-one John Meyer Drive. I'm one who would support putting a three-way stop in at the corner of Mark Courtie Lane and John Meyer. The setup for the street, if you look at it, is in somewhat of a bowl shape, and we have people at both ends who will pick up speed coming down, all the way through, either coming up out of the subdivision up to Towers, or coming from Towers all the way through to the back of our subdivision. I have personally had to, while walking my dog, jump off to the side as some people were coming through, driving much faster than they could see in that morning, in the morning. They were driving faster than their headlights would allow them to see. I'm also worried with the bus stop, with our youth standing out there, come this time of year, in the morning, it is hard to see. The buses come through, anywhere, I saw one this morning, at six-thirty this morning, they're normally about six-forty in the morning. So it is rather dark at that point in time. One side of the road, right next to the bus stop, is wooded from there almost up towards Towers. So it provides blockage for the cut-through for the kids to come through, right next to my house, where they go sledding and such, they have a blast there, great for young kids with that. And then also, as Terry said, we did have somebody actually coming from the back of the neighborhood come up, and it was my wife who had backed out of our driveway and was driving down John Meyer Drive. Somebody came up and was driving right next to her, and ended up passing her, after she, my wife, then slowed down to let them by. This street is narrow. When we do have families have get-togethers in there, it does bring it down to almost one lane. So this would, once we get, if we get the three-way stop in there, would at least hopefully teach people to slow down and be able to control it better than going through. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on traffic regs?
My name's Diane Sudbrock, I live at seventeen thirty-four Schnarr Road, and I have a few pictures I'd like to share. I'm opposed to raising the speed limits to forty-five miles an hour. I agree that forty to forty-five sometimes is a comfortable speed, but I'm worried about that other fifteen to twenty percent of people that are going way faster than that. There are several limited-site intersections. I have this photo here, photo number one. This is, I was on Oberhelm Road, looking west on the Sneak Road, and that's my line of sight from the stop sign. Now, I don't know what that distance is, but I'm going to guess it's around a hundred feet, because I can count about ten fence posts there, and they're maybe roughly ten feet apart. So somebody topping that hill at forty-five miles an hour, according to the National Transportation and Highway Traffic Safety Administration, it takes a car traveling forty miles an hour, a hundred and sixty-four feet to stop on drive payment. That's an inner, a four-way intersection, and there's that hill there. It's extremely dangerous. Photo number two. This is the view from Morrison Lane, looking west on Schnarr Road. So if I want to pull out of Morrison Lane, and I want to make a left turn, this is what I'm looking at. It's a sharp corner with marked by Chevron signs. So a car coming around the corner shouldn't be going forty-five miles an hour anyway, but we all know that, I shouldn't say we all know, we all probably hope that when we get pulled over by a traffic up, a patrolman, if we're going over the speed limit, then he's going to give us a little cushion of maybe five to ten miles an hour. So if the speed limit's forty-five, they're going to be going fifty miles an hour. So that's, it's an insufficient line of sight at that intersection. And this is the third photo. This is pulling out of Oberhelm Road onto Forestale Road. There's a real small grade there, but you can sell, I cannot tell, I can barely see very far to pull out there. So if, and that's a straight stretch, so there's nothing to slow them down through that, anybody traveling on Forestale Road, when someone's trying to pull out of Oberhelm Road. So that's, those three things are a big part of my concern. Another thing is the farm traffic. These hill, these roads all have hills, they all have blind corners. My husband's a farmer. It's not just the cars when you meet or you come up behind a farm tractor, it's the farmers, too. People drive like crazy around farm equipment, and they, they, the yellow lines don't mean anything. They pass you on hills, they pass you on curves, they'll drive in the ditch to get around you. It's nuts. And so this is still a farm area, so I don't think that forty, raising the speed limit to forty-five miles an hour is a smart thing to do. Maybe forty. Start with that and see how it goes, if you, if you're dead set on raising the speed limit. But forty-five is too high, because I think too many people, they're going to assume, "Well, that means I can drive fifty-five." And fifty and fifty-five is just too fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the public hearing for the two thousand thirty master plan for St. Charles County. Is there anybody to speak about that?
Ethan Sargent.
Hello, council, my name's Ethan Sargent, my family has a farm at seventeen-ten Schnarr Road, and there's some talk in the master plan about changing the acreage available for development from five acres to three acres. And we all know what's happening in western St. Charles County. I grew up in Colville, so I know how things are pushing west, there's not much we can do about that, but we have to be smart how we plan. So I just wanted to bring up the fact that we do have the five acres in effect right now for development in the area north of Schnarr, which was part of the development plan, and percolation and plastic soil, and what we're going to do with septics in this area is a concern for people in this area. I see some friends from the Schnarr Road in the audience tonight, so I just wanted to put my two cents in on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we, Jennifer, do you have the, what the proposal is on moving the line, what the current proposal is? Do you, can you put that on, on the screen when other folks come up?
Jim, can you magically put the bit on the screen?
Wow.
You're welcome.
Wow, where'd you go, Jennifer? Good skills.
Next speaker, please.
That's current, that's not proposed.
That's, that's proposed, right, Jennifer?
That's current.
That's the current one.
Do you have the proposed one as well?
Yeah, Jim, has that been, that you had, Fred, to have?
Okay, so keep in mind, this is, this one is proposed by the committee, and so yellow is, that line hasn't really moved, that's four homes per acre. The, off-yellow is three acres, and then the green is five acres, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all I'm going to say for now, and then we'll talk about it when we start talking about it. So if you wanted to go back and forth, just, just to ask when, if you make any comments.
I have another card.
Pardon me?
She doesn't have another card.
Oh, okay.
Arne, would you like to speak again?
Yes.
The speed limit's not funny. I'd like to participate in my government, thank you.
I just thought it was funny that you didn't turn in a card, but she assumed that you were going to speak.
That's not, that's not true, I did turn in a card.
Okay, my bad. You just always speak, so I thought it was funny.
Thank you, thank you for your public apology, I appreciate that.
It's my pleasure. I did not mean to disrespect you in any means whatsoever.
Thank you very much, sir.
There you go.
Members of council, Mr. Chairman, Arne C. A.C. Dino, public advocate and resident. On the two thousand and thirty master plan of the county, there was a public workshop that was held at the Spencer Road Library. I attended that public workshop, and it was advertised on the county's website until six-fifteen. I arrived because I was at another meeting, and I arrived at six-oh-two PM, and there was no one in sight in the community room at Spencer Road Library. So my question is, is where do I see the director's presentation that he made that night? I'd like to view it. I was there, it was advertised till six-fifteen, and I was not able to participate in this public session. Municipal participation. David Gibson was the only city administrator from Oneville that was on this commission to represent municipalities. There was a possible alderwoman, I believe, from the city of Weldon Springs, but I can't confirm that. What about the other municipal governments in our county? There are a lot of urban core areas that are close to our suburban cities that should have been part of this important process. Municipal notification.
Arne, just so you know, we did have representatives from the city of St. Charles there.
Who, who were they?
David Leiser. David Leiser, Bart Haberstroh.
Okay.
Elected officials, as well as, as... Elected officials as well as administrative.
Okay.
Were you with him, Mike?
Yep.
Mike was there?
Well, the county council members, but I was talking about municipal elected officials. I'd like to see a better municipal notification process, especially in zoning changes within one mile of any municipal government in St. Charles County for major developments. I think they need to come to the table and be part of the solution in the comprehensive plan that we're discussing tonight. The character heritage protections of our rural neighborhoods, the charm, the integrity, and responsible growth are questions here. Now, I heard that staff at a meeting that I attended at the police department back in December, the staff wants to change the septic system from five acres to three acres. We went through this change about 10 years ago, and it seems to be working for us. There's a lot of questions because these areas are not served by a sewer district or miles from a current sewer line for a public sanitary sewer district. Water quality is a question. Department of Natural Resources regulations are a question. Clean drinking water is a question. When you're building subdivisions in three acres, you're gonna go past the aquifer, and you're gonna tap into people's already clean drinking water on the well system. So now you're gonna contaminate it. There's safety concerns, possible contamination, runoff of sewage because you're making the density much more smaller and putting more homes on the property than five acres. Did you talk to Cindy May, our county rural septic tank expert, our wastewater systems inspector? I have not heard from Cindy May. I have not heard her testimony in public meetings, have not heard from her, nor the facts of why this change should be in order. I urge this council to vote no on this change from the community development director. It's just against the, against the regulations. It's against the grain. It's against the safety of our public health and our public safety. I haven't even heard the public health director chime in and testify or talk about this change. So I urge the council to vote no. It'd be irresponsible growth of our county in the rural area, especially since they're miles away from a public sewer district. And I totally disagree with the community development director's recommendation to the commission to adopt this in the 2030 comprehensive plan. Please vote no and keep it at the five-acre minimum. Thank you.
They say, they say, you know, we're actually gonna agree on this one.
Okay. But you're only one person, you're one out of seven, so I appreciate it. I'd like to hear comments from the others. Thank you.
Anyone rethink it?
Does that?
You can pop up.
My name is Donna Campmire. I live at 2232 South Highway 94, and my husband sent a copy of this to Mr. Browsell this morning, and he's out of town, so I get to present it.
I sent it out to everybody.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So, we're talking about the 2030 draft master plan, and we're kinda talking about this parcel right here. And the main reason my husband brought it up is because it seems inconsistent with the other agritourism parcels in our area and I have. So, for instance, like this one right here, next to it, is still five-acre minimum. So if you look at this, the parcel in question is right here. So it seems like why are they, in this green agritourism, pulling out that to be a three-acre minimum? And so, the couple comments we have on that is there's two reasons why we feel that that, well, we don't think any should be three-acre minimum, but that because it's inconsistent with, inconsistent with other agritourism parcels. There's a parcel on the other side of it, right here, that's still five acres. And there's also another parcel over here that's still five acres, right by me. And another reason is, and let me just put this up, I guess. Am I going too fast?
No, ma'am.
Here's another look at that. Here's 94 coming into D. This parcel here is being proposed to be three acres, and right next to it, still five acres. And then another reason for keeping that five acres is the aesthetic impact on the eastern gateway to the Missouri wine country. Because when you're coming down Highway 94, this is what you're looking at. You're coming down 94, if you turn right, you're on Double D, and you're heading into wine country right there. So right in front of you is this big parcel. It's not wooded or anything, and they're proposing that to be three-acre minimum, which would be just a lot of homes and change the look and feel of the area. And then here you have, if you're coming down Double D, and there's 94 coming in from the right on the right side again, it just would look better if it's not super populated there. And we also are worried, because we live in this area, that if this gets changed to three acres, that it might feed into other areas around it, like the land that's right next to us. And we don't want to see that happen. So we'd like to see it all stay at five acres.
Are there any other speakers?
Diane, you, are you gonna talk?
What she said. I mean, I mean, I just didn't say.
Okay.
If there's no other speakers, we'll close.
Diane Sudbrock wants to talk, too.
My point really on the master plan is we review it every five years, and we, we spend a lot of time and put a lot of effort into it, and we, and we draw these lines, and we say, this is how we're gonna grow. And then, in five years, we creep the lines a little farther south, and we move the densities a little farther south. And my question to you is, when does it end, and where does it end? In 20 years, what is St. Charles County gonna look like? What do you want it to look like? Is all of St. Charles County, including the western area, and I'd like to put up this map of where it is now, this area basically south of N and west of Z, down to Highway D, is proposed to go to all one to three-acre lots. It's currently five or more. And then, from Highway N, the line has shifted south a little bit to the north side of Schnarr Road, Minor Sagan, and it follows the creek then down almost to Swadey Road and Deer Road down through there. Do we want all of St. Charles County to look like O'Fallon, Wentzville, St. Peters, where we look out across the vistas and we see rooftops and retail signs? Or do we want to keep some of it agricultural? And I think the answer is, we want to keep some of it agricultural. Well, how are you gonna do that if every five years, you keep taking away a little bit more, and a little bit more, and a little bit more? That's my point. Thank you.
Very good. Are there any other speakers? Please come forward.
My name is Don Meyer, 1001 Sycamore Creek. Live out around New Melli. I think Diane makes a great point. I think the county has done an excellent job of developing park systems, but the biggest park system you've got is the larger lots and the presence and the image that gives when people come to those areas. And I applaud the county for making, again, wonderful parks, but part of that drawl out in our area is that you can come out and have that privacy and have that feel. It was mentioned earlier about the septic systems, et cetera, and that's, that's a valid point as well. As we grow, the municipalities have extension of those services. If the county is wanting to do that, they really need to push services out in that area to service that. And I'm not a proponent of that. I think we've got a jewel in our backyard, and I think we've got one of the oldest, if not the oldest, wine district in the country in that area, and we need to protect that and say, 100 years down the road, what's that gonna look like? And that needs to be the ultimate destination for visitors across the country. Look at what Napa did in a relatively short time period. We protect our resources and jewels out that way. That will be an international destination over time, and it just will be, we'll be blessed because it'll be very close to us. But as we increase, allow density to continue to seep in there, yes, we get more residents. Maybe we get more tax dollars. Honestly, my, what I'm seeing on that area, most of the individuals I'm talking with are looking for larger acreage out that area. It's gonna hold its own value. There's strong demand for what's there, and I think maintaining our heritage is a pertinent part of that portion of St. Charles County. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on 2030 master plan and move on to public comments. This is where anybody can come forward and speak for three minutes on any topic. Once a topic has been reached, we'll go back and forth, pro and con. Are there any speakers?
Arne Dinoff.
Thank you very much, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, public advocate and resident. The city of O'Fallon sent the county and the county council a letter dated January 3, 2019. It's a very concerning letter to myself, and I, hopefully, the director of administration, assistant directors of administration, the county attorney, and the county executive. It's for unneeded tax incentives on 25 acres of prime real estate, which is virgin real estate, untouched lands in O'Fallon. It's for the Point West Properties LLC. It's located at 521 through 601 Pearl Drive at Highway 79. They're moving from Wentzville, so there's no added economic development because they're already paying taxes to the county, but now they're gonna get a huge tax break to the tune of close to $4 million of our money. They will create no jobs at this time, and that's according to the owner, because I asked him back in the summer, and now there's been a change of state statute. It's a pet soap manufacturing company and warehouse, 200,000 square foot of warehouse manufacturing space that doesn't pay anything in sales tax, and they're looking for tax breaks, tax incentives, and public giveaways. There's a public hearing slated before the O'Fallon City Council on Thursday, January 24 at 7:30 PM. They are asking for $3.5 million to $4 million in giveaways at all levels of our government, county, public schools, taxing districts, public safety entities, fire, ambulance, and police. I'm asking that the county fight for us here. They want to, they want us to build their building at taxpayer expense and equip their building, which will be awash with the tax, the offset of taxes. This is a private company. They make money. They make profits. And why should taxpayers pay for their building and pay for their furnishings? They didn't pay for my home and my furnishings, or anybody behind me. They didn't get a free pass. Stop sitting back as a county council and taking it time after time, adding the burden of taxes on our backs. Stand up for us and show up at the public hearing. This is an atrocious use of Chapter 100 tax giveaways. Why is the Parks Department, and where do they get their authority to no longer charge a fee or membership at the county youth activity and skate park? We're gonna have a huge loss of revenues, in my opinion. But now Bob Schnarr, our director of finance, is stinging, is sticking it to me as director of finance. He is violating the county charter by not allowing Brenna Hitten, the county registrar, to do her constitutional and county charter duties and responsibility. Mr. Schnarr is interfering and placing a $100-plus fee in 10 business days to complete my request for some basic public information. One, the county executive staff salaries. Why most employees only receive $300 increase of 1%. Joanne Liken was given a $9,500 pay raise. $80,000 more than the commission of administration. 55,000 employees.
All right, Arne, thank you very much, but I'm sorry your time's up. Thank you, sir.
Okay, I will continue the next council meeting, and I hope we can resolve this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Public comments? Seeing none, we close public comments and go on to the executive report from Executive Elmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few comments on the master plan.
Okay.
This is a process, as you know, that's been carried on by the Department of Community Development. We've all been involved in, in asking people to sit and spend their time to put this together, and I want to take this opportunity to thank all of them for the time that they put into this. These were citizens who volunteered their time, hopefully brought some new perspectives to the whole issue. There's really only two things that I kinda would like you to at least consider on, on the master plan. And the first of these is dealing with retail development, okay? And as our custom is, when we expand the areas in the master plan, we tend to go ahead and figure there'll be a certain amount of additional retail development. Well, I don't need to explain to you all, but maybe the rest of the county needs to understand that brick-and-mortar retail stores are not growing. And the question is, if they're not growing, do we need to have as much commercial area? I don't know what happened to my slide here.
It's coming back, I have a feeling. Jennifer just went back there.
Well, that's what I was afraid of. It's a little bit difficult to read. The point is, on the right there, this is the retail market statistical table. Make sure you get a copy of it. There's a copy in front of their seat.
Yep.
And you can see that it breaks down the region in certain areas, and we're certainly not doing as bad as some areas. We're doing a lot better than others. But what it comes down to, I think, is our amount of retail space available is actually, there's actually less rented this year than there was last year. And the reason we're staying steady is because we're growing. If we weren't growing, I'm not sure, I'm not sure we wouldn't have a very severe problem with two, with more retail than we can actually let out. Now, I'm, you know, I'm bringing this up, and I hope it'll be part, at least part of your discussion, and if I can come up with some additional facts by the next meeting, I'll certainly share those with you. But we all need to know, and if I can go to the next slide, please. This is something we've been looking at for, for a year, and if you look at that three-year period, and we all know all the statistics about the fact that St. Charles County overall increase was 6.3%, which is a little bit more than St. Louis city and county, but you can see our percentage of increase was only 3.3%. And the others, while the rest were losing, we were gaining 16,220. And, and as you know from our discussions during the budget process, our head is still above water, okay? But we're looking, we're, we're about here. And we need to prepare on our budget for what's going to happen if we keep having less brick-and-mortar retail and people begin more and more to use the internet. I heard something the other day during the Christmas season, the old, total expenditures for Christmas went up 5% across the country, which is good. The usage of the internet went up 19%, okay? And, and of course, this is something we're gonna be watching in Jeff City to see what, see what the legislature does in terms of taxation of internet sales. And we are getting some voluntarily now. But I think, you know, we've already talked about what we need to do in terms of our budget and what kind of plans we need to make. Maybe we also should make this part of our discussion about the master plan. I mean, if people are not going to, if the next 20,000 people that, that move here are not going to need the same level of brick-and-mortar stores to shop in, then maybe that area would be better left for residential or even agricultural. So I just would call your attention to that, and let me see the next slide, please. Here's the only other issue, and I'll be very brief. And actually, some folks here framed it very well when they start talking about, you know, moving the line down, moving the line down, okay? It's like, where does it stop? Well, I'm not sure where it stops. I mean, the county may continue to grow at the present rate, may, may grow faster, may go slower. But I think there needs to be in our plan some sort of reasonable explanation about why these lines are where they are. Now, the existing, the existing map, and also the one that's being proposed for your consideration, basically has the high-density residential not much south of Highway N. And the reason that's there, there's a very good reason for that. That's as far as the sewers go, okay? If Duckett Creek ever puts a plan in the Darden watershed, then I'm sure we're gonna be confronted with the question of, okay, so what impact is that gonna have on the master plan? But right now, it's real easy to draw that line, because if there's no sewer and water, there's not gonna be anything more than probably three-acre lots, okay? Now, what about the other line, which I think is equally challenging? And that's the line between agricultural, what, and... And that's the line between agricultural, what, and rural residential, okay?
See, this is your proposal, right?
This is...
This is not the proposal.
This is mine, right, Mike?
Correct.
Yeah. This is mine, this is...
You want to point out, though, how much more green you moved up?
Yeah, I will.
Which I agree with.
Yeah, I will in just a minute.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure we, we changed the, the total amount of green is maybe a little bit more, but what we've done is, instead of it being like this, it's more like this. And do I have, do we have the, the map, the demographic?
We have this map.
The slopes?
No, see, Mike...
Can I see the slope map?
This was mine.
This is yours.
We're going to put it on here, Jim.
This is what he has, but it's...
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to...
Here's, here's what I think. I think, obviously, the, the plan is a guideline for us, okay? We change it every four or five years. We can, we can stick with it. We, we always try to have a good reason if we ever go against it. But the point is, these lines, there ought to be some rational basis for where they are. And I think the rational basis, if you look at the slopes, if you look at that area that's, that's brown, that's basically the area that's wooded. It's hilly. The slopes are what, more than 15 degrees, Mike?
17 to 33.
17 to 30 degrees. My argument is, if an area has never been farmed, it should probably never be developed, okay? That's the area where we need our five-acre lots. That's the area that you are going to have to make a good case even to get three acres someday. And, and part of that is because it makes sense, it's harder to develop, the rockier it is, the, the more trees there are, and the more hilly it is. So people probably won't want to go there anyway, but what really bothers me is when we allow anything other than five acres down there, and they're going to have, they're going to be able to cut down a lot of trees. And, and I think that's a, that's a resource we do need to preserve. Does that mean everything below that line will always and every be, everywhere, always and always be what it is now? No. There may be small areas that are not wooded, that are near a major intersection or near defiance, or some area that's growing a little bit. But as a general rule, what I asked Mike to do is take that line that you see there, based on the, based on the topography and how hilly the ground is, and use that as a dividing line between the, what would we say, the three acres and the five acres, okay? Mike, why don't you tell them kind of how you came up with that and try to answer any questions, A.
Evening. So, take you back a second here. The, the conversation about why there was a change to this map concerning rural residential versus the agricultural actually came out of the conversation at the council meeting. There was a question asked about where is this line? There's been many applications that have come forward to this board over the years for three-acre residential development within the agricultural zoned areas. Especially when you have, which this map actually shows, the, the dark orange areas are existing three-acre residential development. They go into those sloped areas. They go and be south of this line that we're talking about. So there's pressure to approve or to at least accept the applications for three-acre requests when they're surrounded by three-acre residential development. And that's the point here. That's what we're trying to determine. Is there a fine line, an area where we should not, to at least have a better understanding of the, what's going on around there below that line or above it? So that, that is why the master plan steering committee looked at this modification by moving that, that rural residential line south. That's where the conversation came out of, and this was the map, that was the map that they proposed, that was in front of you. So the county executive did ask us to look at the line instead of, of what was existing residential, rural residential, but look at the topography, the slopes, the watersheds. And that blue line that you see there, that dark blue line, that is the difference between, the distinct line between the Darden watershed to the north and the Fimo Sage watershed to the south. It is a distinct difference in the slopes. So the slopes and the watershed line line up almost exactly. So that's that line that you see there. So based on that, understanding where the existing rural residential was on top of that, that is the map that, Jim, you could go to that map that the county executive's proposal. This is the map that we came up with as an alternative option. The light yellow or the beige, if you will, in that area, it's hard to see on that map, but the beige is the rural residential that the county executive would, would suggest. The light green, which is really the, the agricultural areas, would basically be portions north and south of D to the west, and then it comes down, basically mirrors D for, for most of the, most of that stretch. So it shrinks the rural residential area that the steering committee had recommended, but that's the, the plan that's, as an option being presented.
All right. Very good. Questions?
Yes, I do have my mics at the podium. One thing that, you know, every, every area is different, and I think I echo what Mr. Elmer said about topography, I think that's the whole key to the answer. But just the whole key to the question, but like in District 1 where I'm from, the, the ground is different than down in Defiance area. It's good farmland, okay? And it's getting developed, okay? And if we stick to a five-acre minimum in that area, I can tell you a lot of Josephville, Flint Hill, St. Paul, they'll all jump at three-acre developments. That's historically, so you've got a fine line to cross there, because while some folks say, well, it's always been five, it should be five. If the, if you're a farmer and you've got 100 acres to get rid of, and you can only get, you can only get 20 homes in the county versus 33 homes in, in the city of St. Paul, for instance, you're going to go with St. Paul, okay? So I, I think that's an issue. Also, I just want to bring it to your attention, this White Branch Planning District that's up in that area, okay? I've not spent much time, this is the first I've looked at this book, but, I mean, I'd like to get some comment from those folks in St. Paul about that. Unlike what you say here, I was involved with a water tower and a sewer plant, there's a water and sewer for 1,500 homes up there. So, I mean, I think that's going to pack it. So are you needing to get this done in two weeks, or are we going to have time to work on this, okay? Okay? You wanting to get this approved, council, in the next meeting?
That's the plan.
Okay.
Because I'm... The master plan.
Okay.
So the, the White Branch, I can, yeah, comment on that. So the, the master plan process here is, this is an update. We are simply updating the 2025 envisioned plan. We did not change that portion. That, that is, was left over from the previous planning document. It's calling for a study to be done.
Okay.
And that study was not done in the past five years. The committee, the steering committee felt that that is still relevant to have that study there, so that, that wording was not changed.
Okay. And then, you know, also, knowing a little bit about retail, from being a retailer, the whole, my whole life in this county, I see with the numbers that you were referring to, Steve, I think were the size of the buildings. And while I can see the size of the buildings aren't necessarily getting that much bigger, the land requirements are, because everybody drives now, so the parking is bigger, and for instance, car dealers, an example. I just visited the largest Buick GMC dealer in the nation in Collinsville, Illinois, and the reason it's over there over, than over here, they've got a 40-acre lot there, okay, for just nothing but cars. So you might want to look, I, I realize what we're talking about are building sizes and how, what's available square footage of buildings.
Square footage, yeah.
But a lot of the businesses now require a lot of space around them. An example would be right across from Costco in St. Peters, that new buildings get developed. That's a shingle, that's, that's, that's Arrowhead Shingles, that's a roofing contractor. There's so much shingle volume in this county now that they need a that big a building, that big a piece of land just for shingles alone. So I, I guess what I'm saying is, the square footage of buildings may not be growing, but I think the land use, what we really have to look at for the future, I think a lot of these businesses are going to need more land, just the way that businesses are evolving with, even though Amazon is wonderful for buying a cellphone or a VCR or whatever from, but, you know, you can't, the big equipment that has to be delivered with trucks like shingles and, and our car lots, that's never going to happen that way. You know, you're still going to have to have local suppliers with large lots for all that type of equipment.
There's no question, the nature of retail, brick-and-mortar especially, is changing, and it's a matter of determining what that means for, going forward.
Yeah.
And there's positives and negatives there.
Amazon's charging sales tax now. Are we getting any of that? Are we are?
In the form of a use tax since February of 18.
So basically, it's helping our parks, but it's not doing anything to help the general fund as of right now. And I guess, hopefully, is the governor's proposing, will that be, will Amazon then eventually come to us as, as a sales tax, or is it going to continue to come to us as a use tax?
It seems as though MML's proposal, which I think is really the only one that's been vetted out there, is a, is it, to bring it on as a use tax.
Which is bad for us.
Yes. MML is the Missouri Municipal League for the folks at home.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike, I, I have a staff and went over this map, and I had a, I also had a map, but Mike called me today and said that Steve was working on one, and Steve, I do appreciate this, because this is actually very similar to what I was going to offer. And I'm very pleased that you did this, because this is good. And I know you mean the history buff that you are, you wanted to save the history time by the boom farm. So that's a good thing. It was coming down...
You're hitting me in a vulnerable area now, Mr. Brazel.
Yeah, it was just coming down, the, the three-acre lots are coming down too far, and we had a lot of people call about it. Diane, this, this hits your point that there, you're talking about it, it goes all the way up to the Bushes Walleye, so that'd be five acres. So those other beige areas, those are existing three-acre subdivisions, so back, when you get down that far, it's pretty much saying that whatever three-acre subdivisions have been built, or independent three-acre plots, is, that's the last, those were done mostly 20 years ago, like Callaway Farms and, and all those different ones. And we haven't done any three-acre lots down this way in 20 years. So I'm really pleased with this. I'll be offering this, this would be, have to be offered as an amendment to the, to the master plan, but there is only one little correction, Mike, I think that it might be a mistake, a typo, when you come across D.D., you come across Darden Creek, that's Avondale Estates, and that's three-acre lots there. You can't see it on that, but you can see it here. That should not be, that, that space, so you, we'll talk about that later, but that's already a developed three-acre subdivision on both sides. When you go across the...
Yeah, I know where it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One, one question I thought we would have gotten right away, and Mike, tell me if I'm wrong, but those, there are areas that are now five-acre requirement that are already have three.
Correct.
And this is one of the reasons we went, if you remember, eight or 10 years ago, we went from three acres to five in agricultural, because what was happening is we were getting de facto three acres only, because people would do these three-acre lots. Now, that area that has already pretty much gone that way, you still, and you've been very responsible, I think, about granting the exceptions to the five-acre, the five-acre rule. And I think, you know, I, my guess, and I can't, I don't have crystal ball, and my guess is, if people come in and show you that they're surrounded by, there's 20 other three-acre lots around them, and they're right in the middle, and they'd like to be three acres too, you certainly will have a discretion then to, to allow that. But they won't be able just to go in and do a three-acre subdivision in that area without getting the rezoning and without explaining why you should go against the master plan.
And, and back to that point, Diane, what your point is too, is they do always move it down. Every year, it's a fight. Every, every time the master plan comes up, I know it's, it's going to be a fight. And I told Nancy Matheny when this was to come up, that I wanted to be at that meeting, and she was sick that meeting, and then the other gentleman that represents Augusta was, he wasn't there, and Mark was too new to know what the heck to do. And so when this came out, I'm like, oh, this is not good. But I, I think these changes are very good. But the plan is, is what we talked about with you, Mike, is, now, the HBA is not happy with this, but I don't care about that. The, these, these yellow, the, the three-acre lots, the idea is, is to get that developed, which would throw up a dam against the municipalities pretty much, because no municipality's tip, it's pretty unusual to annex three-acre lots, because of services and stuff. So if you're going to play a chess game to keep it rural and protect that wine district and, and the, the, the culture of, of that area, is to try to hope that the three-acre, that, that, that beige is, is filled in with three-acre lots, and then you're, that, that's how you lock it in. That's how you lock in the agriculture, because that's the map, and it's not going to grow any for the, so the four acres, four homes per acre is going to keep coming down. That's, that's how I see it, anyway. It's a chess game. Everything we do, you try to do what's the best move to stop something else from happening.
All right. County executive?
Question for Mr. Brazel. You think we ought to call it the Wine and Beer District now?
I don't know. I don't know. Stay away from that one.
Is there anything else, Mr. Executive?
No, sir.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Hurlbert. Moving on, we move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything to be removed, gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Consent agenda has been approved. Next on our list of items is the bills for introduction. Bill number 4677. Will you read the bill, please?
Bill number 4677, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance adopting the master plan of the county of St. Charles, Missouri, entitled "Master Plan Envision 2030."
Any questions or comments, gentlemen?
I have a couple of comments. I did ask Mike this question, and I just want to confirm that some of the language that was asked of us to include CID's and, and TIFs, or whatever that language was, that we did not add any of that language to the, the HBA wanted us to add those, those languages in there. And back to Mr. Dinoff's point, is the county doesn't do TIFs or CID's or any of that stuff. We don't do tax giveaways, and so, so that language was not added, nor was it encouraging to do any kind of sewage treatment, plant stump and sewage in the creeks, or any of that stuff, right?
No.
Okay. I mean, I know, I, I asked you this once, I just want to make sure.
I believe that's why the HBA was requesting that language, because we didn't put anything in there.
No, I understand that, yeah. And I appreciate you going through all this with me and spending time, and, but the only, I, I'm going to make it, when everyone is done with their comments, I am going to offer the executive's map as an amendment to the map, but I would like, at the second meeting, I want you to look at that Avondale, that, that yellow area.
We can correct that, yeah.
Yeah. It should be, it should be beige.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? We'll move on to bill number 4678.
I want to offer this as an adendum to the...
At, at this point, okay.
Yeah, so it can be looked at, it'll be on the website. I'd like to offer the administration's executive proposal on the land use 2030 plan.
Second.
Is that a roll call vote or a voice roll?
All in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed?
No.
Passes? No? Okay, one. All right. Seeing that, we move on to bill number 4678.
Bill number 4678, requested by Hope Woodson, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance approving a standard form agreement to provide mosquito control services to municipalities and authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute these agreements.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we move on to bill 4679.
Bill number 4679, requested by Bob Schnur and Kurt Barr, sponsored by Dave Hammond, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Secretary of State for a grant awarded to the election authority for an election efficiency grant to assist with election activities, systems and equipment maintenance, voting equipment purchases, maintaining voter lists, and polling place accessibility.
Any questions on that?
Kurt, you got anything you want to say? All right.
So we got the same grant last year. It was 54,000 last year, it's 55,000 this year. Last year, what we spent the money on was all the temps that we hired to, well, the previous administration hired to certify all of the signatures for the petitions. That's what we used it for last year. This year, I haven't quite decided what we're going to use it for, you know, to perform the job, but most likely, we're either going to use it for cleaning up the litter rolls, or we're going to use it for some security measures. And both need to be addressed. I haven't decided exactly which direction we're going to go yet, but I can definitely spend this money wisely, and so I'd certainly appreciate the council's approval, because I can't actually start spending the money until I have the approval.
Right. And Mr. Barr, would you introduce yourself, so the public knows who you are and what your, what your role in government is?
Oh, absolutely. I am Kurt Barr, the Director of Elections for St. Charles County. I recently replaced Rich Grismer in that position. Before that, I served as a state representative here in St. Charles County for the last eight years, and a fourth-generation St. Charles County resident. Anything else, Mr. White?
Thank you very much. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think we turned down too many grants, because...
No, no, I hope we don't.
Get them all. We all the money we could get.
Find some more.
Find some more.
That concludes the Bills for Introduction. Move on, yes?
You missed a great opportunity there.
What was that?
When I, when I got up to talk about my first bill I sponsored in the Senate, everybody acted all excited about it, and then when they voted, they all voted no.
Moving on to Announcements miscellaneous, anybody have anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
So moved. Thank you, everyone, for coming.